Over three months already. He is our new AIS coordinator. He took over the Bruce Onspock's position, the AIS coordinator. He's doing a fantastic job. Been here for three months so far, so we're glad he's here. And our brand new one is Dan Gackel. He is our, he just started on Monday, yesterday. He is our conservation technician in environmental services and his job focus mostly is going to be on our soil health programs, working with land producers. Mostly in the northern part of the county, actually, but he'll be for a while at least covering kind of the whole county.
Awesome.
We're glad they're both here.
Do we want to get a little, that they get, say a little speech, right? I mean, you get five minutes though.
I told them they might have to sing a song, but.
You want to tell us a little bit about your background, where you're from?
I'm originally from Garrison, North Dakota. Been working there for the last four years, kind of in soil health. And yeah, moved back around the area here, so.
Mr. Chair, so if you're from North Dakota, what brings you or how did you hear about Beltrami County and?
I was living in northwest Minnesota for quite a few years and moved back home to help my mom out with my dad and kind of. We really liked the area and wanted to move back here eventually, so good place. We have two young daughters to raise our kids, so. Yeah.
Awesome. Welcome.
Welcome.
I am originally from International Falls.
We won't hold that against you.
Okay. Figured that was coming. And then I went to Bemidji State and got a degree in wildlife biology, wetlands ecology. Then moved back home for a couple of years and worked for Voyagers National Park doing water quality monitoring and aquatic invasive species research and harmful algal bloom, stuff like that. And after that went and worked in the Red River Basin doing some water quality monitoring for a short period of time and ended up here, so.
Awesome. How's that starry stone work?
We're trying to manage it.
Yeah, that's a tough nut to crack, isn't it?
Yep.
All right, you got your hands full with that.
Yes.
Don't use zebra muscles to solve the problem.
No.
Welcome, welcome. Thanks Brent. Any other new employees? Any future work meeting topics anyone wants to bring up? Seeing, nope, seeing none. Let's move on to Emily. Do you want to bring your historical society update for us? Welcome.
I think I've got slides here.
Yeah, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Oh, it looks like it's working great. So where do I point this? It shouldn't matter, but there we go. All right. Well, thank you for having me here today, commissioners. I appreciate it. Again, my name is Emily Faves. I'm the executive director of the Historical Society. And I've been with the Historical Society now for three wonderful years, which has been really great. And I'm excited to celebrate a lot of our progress. So I'm here on behalf of our board of directors, many of whom are on the screen, but also many of whom are in the back of the room today, along with a few of our volunteers who are here to, I think, provide moral support for my presentation. So, so I just wanted to start by talking about some of the collection work that we have done this year. Part of our mission is collecting, preserving and sharing. So we are sort of in a moratorium right now for collecting because we have limited amount of space in our depot for items. We just kind of ran out of room. Now, part of the work that we are doing right now is going through the entire collection and doing some inventory so that we can pare down the items that are not relevant to Beltrami County. I mean, we've got a pink plastic bucket that was acquisition about 10 years ago. So that's just a really great example of stuff that like, why, right? So we're working through pieces like that. We've also applied for a grant. This is the second time we've put in a legacy grant application for new boxes and new shelving upstairs. And that will increase our capacity significantly and then we'll be able to start adding to our collection again. But we did take in three major acquisitions in the past year that we're very proud of. The first is the Bemidji High School Sports Film Archive. We brought in roughly 75 film reels that were going to be destroyed as the, when the school was moving to the new building. A lot of the sports archives were just thrown away. And luckily, one of the, one of the alumni saved them and then eventually donated them to the Historical Society. We received a grant to have those digitized and that we're in the process of that right now. The young man, he's just out of high school, like I think he's in his sophomore year of college. Who's working on this grant is doing research to learn about all the athletes who participated in those contests so that we can invite any who are still living to join us once we have those digitized reels back. And we'll have a big celebration of all this history that we've been able to preserve. The second is the Great Northern Steel Cupola Caboose. If you've driven by the Historical Society at all, you see a giant red caboose sitting out front. It's even redder now, thanks to preservation work that's gone on by the train club that meets downstairs in the Historical Society basement, if you will. But we're really excited to bring this caboose and we want to say back to Bemidji because we know that it was stationed in the northern area. We know that it worked out of Duluth and had runs in this area, so it's very likely that it stopped in Bemidji at some point, which is really great. And we're, we're pretty far in our preservation process and look forward to inviting folks to be able to go through that once the inside and outside are, are complete. And then the final item that we brought in that was super exciting was Sheena Wishkung's musket. This was actually, it used to be on display at the History Center way back in the 60s. And then the family took the artifact back because they wanted to keep it in the family, make sure it was properly preserved. But now the family has determined that we are probably the best and safest place for this history to stay. And so now it's on display in the History Center, which is really exciting. We also have, really have some great programs this year at the Historical Society, in part keeping with our exhibit theme, which is about all the music of Beltrami County. You'll see in the center, we have a QR code and we have these now posted throughout the History Center. And they will lead to playlists that we've made available online of music from our past, starting with music of the Ojibwe that was recorded in Red Lake. We have music that was recorded by Charles Van Der Sluis, one of our first Historical Society presidents. He recorded an entire series on the centennial music. He just sat in the History Center and played for a bunch of people and a reel recording. All the way through up to, up to current music, which is really great. And so not only are we able to share this in the History Center, but because it's online, people from all over the world, and we've seen these statistics, have been able to access our music and are sharing our music with other people as well. So it's really been a great experience to share something that's not necessarily visual in nature, but audio in nature and be able to share that history across the globe. Aside from that, we've offered regular monthly programs this year featuring live music. And then we've also had our two major events, History Mystery, which happens at the end of the year, and then Trains at the Depot, which happened in April. And we had over 500 folks attend that this year, which was really awesome. And then you could also check out our quarterly newsletter, which we do share with the county. But that comes out, our writer, Sue Brunson's in the back who edits that and just does an amazing job sharing history of the county, but also updates about the History Center. The third component of our work is preservation. And as I mentioned before, we've done a great deal of work on preserving the caboose to make sure that it's available for future generations. The paint has been put on and now should last for about 20 years, which is really great, so that we can avoid rusting through and ending up with leaks in the, in the caboose. We've also done a great deal of work on the inventory of our photograph collection. We've had a couple of volunteers who have literally gone through tens of thousands of images and moved them out of boxes that were just sort of like stacked up. So you'd have to like touch everything to get to what you needed. Now they're in binders that are easy to access. You can see both the front and the back of the photo, which is really helpful for identification and for scanning purposes. So it'll make it easier for us to do the digitization that we need to do in the future on these thousands of images. We're also working on the inventory of our mezzanine, so all of our artifacts are mostly stored on the third floor. We're going through every single box, one by one, looking at what's in there, taking account of that so that we can find out what has moved in the collection and what items might be missing so that we can start to get a better handle on our data and the materials that we have. We've also done a great deal of learning in these past several months about our temperature and humidity. And all this started a couple of years ago when we had a collection assessment for preservation grant, federal opportunity that we were allowed, where we brought two assessment specialists to the Historical Society. One took a look at our collection, the other took a look at the building. And in the look at the building, they said, almost everything is really good, but your humidity seems to be really high. So they recommended that we get some temperature and humidity controllers to kind of test what was going on. And so we put those in place in July of last year and we took tests in 15-minute increments to take a look at how that was going. And what you see on the screen is, is, is that data. So the green line is, is our humidity and everything that's outside of that bar in the center is bad. It either means that the humidity is too high or it's far too low. And what we have found in our data is that our highs are as much as 74% and as low as 14%. And that's really bad for a museum. I mean, that's, that's, that's really tough conditions. And it's because of the damage that it can do to, to items. So when your, when your humidity is above that safe zone of about 55%, even for two days, mold can start to develop. And you can see mold on this book that's in the center, and that's a picture that we took this week for this, for this presentation. We've also experienced bug infestation. So the basket on the right is from our Morrison collection. This was a donation of artifacts that came in 1962. Almost all of these items came from Red Lake. So this basket is, is part of that collection. And the little dust that you see at the bottom is insect frass. Insects get into the museum when it's warm and they start to eat everything that's organic, which is almost everything that we have. We also experienced rust, brittleness, and then tension cracks. And this happens when you get real high and then real low and your humidity, you know, objects, especially organic objects, tend to not be able to take that kind of pressure and then they crack. So this is a canoe that was made and sold in a trading post up in Red Lake. And it is experiencing one of those cracks and that's where that crack came from. So there's, there's very little that we can do to help fix or mitigate these problems once they start to happen. They're just will keep happening and it will get worse until we fix the HVAC problem. So we, we've done a little work trying to get a history together for the city. And so we met with the city council last night to talk with them about the urgency that we have around getting the HVAC repaired in the building. This has been a problem for 24 years. So when the building was renovated initially, paid for by the City of Bemidji, in part by the Historical Society grants and so on, the HVAC was not working when the building was turned over. And then subsequently, additional conversations over the past couple of decades have not led to getting the HVAC fixed. There was no action taken at the council meeting last night, except to provide us with dehumidifiers in the meantime and to help us pay for that difference in our electricity, which is great. They also affirmed that they will at least pay up to half of what we need to pay to get the HVAC replaced, but HVAC system is going to cost $250,000. So we're really hoping that we can work with the city to identify grants, other means of funding to help get this sorted. But the city has to apply for the grants. The city has to apply for any loans because it's their building, their HVAC system, not ours. So we're, we're really hoping we can move forward on that swiftly, that we'll get the dehumidifiers in the building as soon as possible. We've asked the city to resolve this problem no later than fall of next year. That's about the cycle that it would take for us to apply for grants with the city, see how that goes, and then get the work started in the grant process. If we don't have it by that time, we have to, as a, as a board, start thinking about where we're going to store our collection and our exhibits until this is resolved. Because we're, we're, we're not, we're responsible for the collection. We're responsible for this history. And we're not being good stewards of it right now by allowing this HVAC problem to continue impacting our artifacts in a negative way. So that's just something that we're, we're thinking on, but also very much hoping that the city will be able to work with us and, and get this problem with the HVAC resolved. So that's, that's where we are right now. We have communicated with our members. We've also communicated with the tribal council at Red Lake. We did that because the majority of the items from the Morrison collection, again, came from Red Lake. Also, we have some items in the collection that are NAGPA affiliated, meaning that they're sacred items. They need to go back to the, to the, to the tribe. There's a process for that, that the tribe and the museum have to follow, and we're kind of in a holding pattern for that right now. So until then though, we are supposed to be stewards of these resources. And the HVAC, of course, impacts that. So I, I just, you know, other than this major issue with the HVAC that we're working through, you know, we're. I suppose in part, you know, one of the things that's been amazing about the last couple of years is that we've been able to acquire the knowledge to help us understand what the problems are to make the changes that we need to make. And we've got a great set of board members and volunteers and members who have helped us to make the changes that are required to improve the services that we offer, not only preserving the, the history of, of the community, but also sharing it with all the visitors who come in and talk to us, sharing it on our website, on our social media and so on. And that's been great. I also want to thank you too for the, for the additional money that you provided to us last year for the Beltrami bicentennial. So in addition to the $7,500 that you provided in our annual appropriations, you gave us an additional $7,500 for the bicentennial program and annual meeting last June. We were able to buy chairs, we were able to buy microphones. There were a lot of things that were possible through that, that we are able to use today. Additionally, we won an award for that event. So we actually won a Minnesota History Award that is specific for civic events and special, special occasions and specifically for the Beltrami bicentennial. So it was a real honor to be able to accept this on behalf of the Historical Society. And it would not have been possible without your donation. So I just wanted to say thank you and bring this in person to show you that, you know, they give us nice things for their work that we do sometimes. The slide that you see on the screen, I just wanted to provide a little bit of research and context around the donation that we received from the county aligned with the donations that other, you know, historical societies receive. We would love to see our donation be increased. Obviously, there's a lot of work that we can do. As you could see from the amount that you gave us last year, just doubling that appropriation that we received, gave us huge amounts of benefits. We're still using those chairs. We're still using those microphones to offer programs. You know, there's a lot of resources that brings in, you know, another $7,500 would allow us to bring in an intern to help us get some more digitization done. I mean, there's no end to the projects that we can complete, obviously with more funding. And we know that the budget's always tight and there's always other priorities. But we appreciate you recognizing that the history of the county is an important priority for our community. And thank you again for your time and I welcome any questions that you might have.
Questions for Emily?
Mr. Chair. I guess I was going to try to limit my questions, but you'd be surprised if, if I did. Well, first, congratulations with your award. And thanks for, for everything you guys did with the bicentennial, great event. You know, I was watching some of the videos that were, were put out and I think the presentations were, were awesome. I think some of the questions I have are, do you have any visitor stats? And then how that has an economic impact to the county or the city? I think, in my mind, I think that might help justify, you know, maybe donation request or an increase in, in funding. I'm not on the budget committee this year, but I think that would be something that might be helpful for, for folks that are on, on the committee. Providing that type of statistic, I think would be, would be helpful. There was one more thing, but I forgot that. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Emily, and I appreciate it. The previous slide where you showed the Beltrami County having such a small percentage of our income, a huge portion of our, our revenue or expenditures is all pass-through dollars from the state. And we are the second poorest county in the state, so just to put it in context for those that might be watching remotely and stuff is, not that we're trying to be cheap, we have very limited funds and a lot of need. But, you know, really, I got a, got a couple of emails from some, some constituents on the, the deal. I don't know if it was just my ignorance or of not knowing that this has been a problem, you know, with the, with the HVAC system or if it's because it was a city, city building, city issue and it had never really been brought to our attention before. But it would have been nice to know about it ahead of time before just getting kind of blindsided from the constituents. You know, I just didn't, didn't know that it was even an issue. And so, you know, it's something that we would certainly like to be able to, you know, try to help with if, if we can. And that's, you know, we certainly want to protect those artifacts. I know up in where I live, Ten Streak, they have a bunch of really awesome artifacts up there. And, you know, not sure what they have for HVAC systems or whatever to protect them, but I really enjoy that kind of stuff. So anything that we can try to do to help would be, you know, we just need to know what we, what we can do.
Yeah. And, and, and I appreciate the, the comments and, and I don't know what the county can do. I mean, I don't, I don't know what your reach is or, you know, what resources might be available. And I, I kind of go back to, you know, the city wrote the lease. It's the city's building. It's, you know, their responsibility and we're in the building. So I, it's complicated. I know it's complicated. And I know that the budget's complicated, right? This is not, this is not every data point that represents the true nature of, you know, at the same time, Clearwater County receives twice as much money as we do. So it's, you know, I'm, I'm trying to balance where we are as a county with also the needs of the organization and trying to figure out where we can get support. All I can do is advocate and, and thank you, you know, so I advocate and I thank you. So, and, and Tim, back to your question, we roughly see around 1,500 folks a year at the History Center. And a lot of those folks are coming in the summertime. They are visitors to Bemidji and to Beltrami County. You know, they were here for a fishing tournament and they had a free day and they wanted to come in and see the History Center. We had a lot of folks who did that earlier this year. We also have schools come in. That doesn't happen quite as often, but we do have schools that visit small groups as well. So, and we, again, we see a large number of our visitors on the train day. That's, that's, you know, families come and bring their little kids to see all the models and stuff. But throughout the year, we have visitors and our goal with our programs and special events is to increase that. And the more help and resources we have, the better we'll be able to meet, meet those needs. It's also our goal in our strategic plan over the next three years to redo our exhibit. And that's a significant expense, but it, that should bring a lot of, you know, faces back into the museum who saw it once 20 years ago. And they just want to see something new. So, thank you.
Richard?
What was the dollar amount for the HVAC system?
$256,000 was the quote. Yeah. And that's not the ductwork and all that. That's just to replace the humidification pieces that are not, not working.
Specialty good for the museum type environment or?
Well, I didn't, I don't think so. Well, I thought so too. So Peterson's provided the quote and they're a, we, we got that bid last year when we were trying to apply for a state grant and aid. And they're, they're like a state, they have some sort of state relationship where we only need to get one quote if you go with them versus three. So it sounds like their quote was a good one per the state. But I think, you know, we've got two separate systems that are controlling both parts of the building and it's big. And, you know, I think it just, it's a lot, so.
Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Emily.
Hi.
It's, it's always good to hear what's going on and what the need is and what our success. It might even be good to do it a couple of times a year.
Yeah.
Just to kind of keep the board informed. It, you know, it can be a five-minute, 10-minute, whatever you think, but it's always helpful then to put things in perspective. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Emily, just one last question I had. Is, is there a part of the system that has not, that has failed now that was working before? Because 1999, that's 25 years ago. It's like any system that holds, really likely to fail, I'm guessed.
Well, that, so I don't, I don't understand enough about HVAC to explain what happened, but it sounds like the hu, I mean, the documents that we got, they show that the humidification part was, it sounds like it was set up backward. So it never did work to begin with. So it just has never worked. And when they changed the boiler out 10 years later, it was like, oh, we really need to get this HVAC part fixed and it never got fixed. So it's just, it kept progressing as a problem. And then of course, you know, you get even 10 years later, that cost is going to seem astronomical compared to just fixing it at the time. So I think it just got out of control.
Well, I'm glad you caught it when you did before stuff got wrecked.
Yeah, more wrecked. Yes, thank you.
All right.
Thank you again so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Yep. All right. Let's talk about solid waste, Brian.
Trash talk. Hot trash.
Oh, hot trash. There we go.
Here we go.
It's not really as long as all those slides were, is it?
No, I'm going to brief over the slides, but the slides were to give you a really good overview.
That wasn't really good overview.
For, well, I don't, I don't remember the last time I was in front of all of you to kind of give a, a history of solid waste in the 101. So we're going to brief through some of those. And, you know, one of the things I guess with solid waste, it's always changing. Got this new EPR bill. And then just recently, the state also passed a prohibitive invasive species, which includes now the jumping worm. So that's part of our, that ends up being part of our waste stream as well. So it's just, there's always something new and creative that we, we discover that's bad for our waste stream.
Well, I have a dead mouth. I'm waiting for someone to.
Well, how about I continue because I have the slides and you have them in front of you? Yeah. I think this happened last time I was here. So the history, just to look over the history, you know, our department's fairly young. You know, we started basically in 2016, so that was just kind of show you that we've been constantly trying to improve the department. We've been in constant change from just a me being part of the department to now we have 15 employees as a department. What we do, we administer the solid waste ordinance. We take care of all the complaints. We deal with the MPCA and make sure that we're compliant with all the permits. We submit all the annual reports. And we manage, and this is $11.2 million worth of assets. And our current annual budget is $6.8 million. One of my, one of the, my tasks is to educate the public. We do that through several types of. We do that through several types of media, including the quarterly newsletter that the county puts out. But I'm on chat about once a month. We do tours of the transfer station to the landfill. And actually do an article, a trash talk article in the Pioneer as well. So we, we, our solid waste in Beltrami County, the, we have all the resources because we have partners. And we have the Northwest Household Hazardous Waste Group that we're part of, but it has 11 other counties. We have the Polk County Coalition, which that's where most of our, actually all of our MSW, which is Municipal Solid Waste and our recycling goes as long as well as our organic recycling. So one of the things that Craig and I found out during our last meeting that we had is we're going to incur a price increase in our tip fees in Polk County. So we're going to go from $80 to $85. Every $5 is approximately $150,000 a year. And then, starting 1 January, we will be, be assessed or our tip fee will be $87.50. So with that being said, this isn't part of the budget stuff, but I, you'll see in my budget that we need to do something as well in the future because inflation continues to hit. And when things like this go above inflation, the, the books don't balance out. So the why, and that one of the things, why the price increase and its costs that they incur, a lot of it is the new landfill sale has costed them hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get it to where it is currently. And they had to buy some wetland credits and different things like that. And the other, the other thing with that is we had a, we were intended to get some money or I guess take some more waste in from Becker County and that was going to offset our tip fee increase. But that did not happen. So that, all of those things combined is what's bringing that tip fee up. And that $5 tip fee increase starting in July was not forecasted, but we're, we'll be able to absorb it currently. Some interesting data. Grab it now. We'll give this a shot here. Oh, right there. So, transfer station is very busy. We love to haul trash in, in greater Minnesota, especially up in this area. We get 600 cars on average and it says 900 cars is quite frequently, but we have had over 1,000 visitors or customers in one day visiting the Bemidji Transfer Station, which at some point, I don't know when that's going to be, but at some point, we're going to probably exceed what we can actually take at the transfer station in any one day because 1,000 customers is a, is a lot of, is a lot of people. Talked a little bit about waste ratio changed during the pandemic because we didn't have commercial waste. We ended up having a lot more residential waste. And with that, the reason that's something to bring up, that really affected budget that year. So as we continue to, I guess, grow, again, I think this, this department is probably the newest department or youngest department in the county as far as overall, that we haven't necessarily had a year. It's just what I would say normal. Because it's either been building, purchasing, pandemic to you name it, we're going to look at trying to do some remodeling next year, which is good because I believe in constant improvement and, and I like the challenge of all of those moving parts.
Before you go on, can I, it might be easier to ask a question as we're on it instead of waiting till the end? I hope that's okay.
That's fine.
Just the question I had is on the recycling, I didn't quite understand. Can you explain that, that Beltrami County doesn't pay for processing single sort? Can you explain all that to the folks that are listening in can?
Absolutely, so, so the benefit of, so a lot of people will say, why do we, why do we recycle? It's, it's going to get taken out anyway. Well, that's a somewhat of a true statement, but it's also false because if you throw your, if you don't recycle and you leave your fiber products in there, that, those fiber products don't get recycled. The, the material recovery facility, which is just the fancy sorting facility, a lot of it's mechanical. There's robots there now and there is personal sorter or human sorters there too, but they're the upfront sorters to that, but so the recycling, we don't pay for that. That was an incentive when the first, when the coalition first started that, to try to encourage the counties to recycle. We pay for the transportation, but we don't pay a tip fee. So if we take that out of the garbage and so then we really bring less garbage over there that we pay for. And if we actually had, take more recycling out, we don't pay for that. We don't pay for the processing of it. So it's a benefit for us to recycle because it actually then also helps reducing our tip fee that we have. And, you know, our tip fees average about, well, it's about a million dollars for each facility for the landfill and for the Foston Material Recovery Facility.
I just remember well over 40 years ago, when, when the kids come home from school, you know, and they're like little, and they're like, Dad, we have to recycle. And of course, you know, no one knew what that was. And, and then you got into that. I'm thinking I'm seeing a little bit of a reverse that some of these kids that are now 45 years old, I'm, I'm beside myself, why are you not throwing that in my, have a recycle bin here? And, and there's like, I don't know what happened, they grew up with that and I, it's, it's so easy, you guys have made it so easy for us to just, I can have two cans, one for garbage, one for all of the other stuff, the cans, the bottles, the cardboard, it's so easy. I just, I would ask all of our residents, please do that because it'll save us a lot of money.
Yeah, it, it'll add up. And I guess that's, you know, that's always thing recycle. It, that's, that's not only is it good to try to save on some of our raw re, or raw resource, resources out there, but actually to save us money. And as, as I'm the one that manages the budget, I want to save as much money and I, I hate coming to the board and asking for money.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep. So, let's see, so special waste, just to highlight this, we spend about $13,000 a month. So that's e-waste, tires. That's light bulbs, those types of things, all the paint chemicals, that's what it averages out about. This is a little bit about where it talks about some misunderstandings that as far as not all waste is created equally. So batteries are one of our biggest threats right now, especially lithium batteries. That's one of the reasons we have all of the battery recycle drop-off sites at all of our facilities that we have. We've had battery fires in the transfer station. We have not had one that's, we've been there. They've all been isolated incidents, they've never been in fuel. But it's only a matter of time. Hubbard's had battery fires, significant damage, hundreds or a couple hundred thousand dollars, actually two events that happened. So it's, I, I don't want to jinx us, but it will happen because there's too many batteries that are out there and we can't see them. And all that takes is them to get ruptured, punctured, somehow damaged. And that's what will make them start on fire. Lithium, lithium batteries are, are the problem ones.
Just even the small coin cell batteries, like you're having a watch or a calculator or something, even those, they should be wrapped in tape and, or when put in a separate container that, at the transfer station. Because those are lithium as well.
Yep, so like the double As and all of those.
Those, if they're double A lithium, then they should be treated differently. If they're alkaline or, or the other technologies in there, then you can just toss them in the garbage.
To make sure that.
Normal alkaline batteries are, are dispose them in the garbage. But if you don't know, I always say just put it in the recycle battery. Because I'd rather us sort it than start a fire, so.
So many things nowadays, being lithium batteries on drills and all these things that are, you know, getting and those bigger batteries that are lithium, that's what's, you know, they're getting crushed, they get run over. If they get thrown in the regular garbage, they get run over on the transfer floor and then all of a sudden they got a fire. And that could be very expensive to the residents. So hopefully people will take heed and make sure that all lithium batteries get put in the lithium battery containers.
So as industry, I'll just, I'm going to just end on last thing on batteries. But batteries, we can only take batteries that are 300 watt hours. So all these new batteries in the e-bikes and the big batteries that you see powering lawn mowers and different things like that, those are actually beyond what we can actually handle at the transfer station. And they're very costly to get rid of. In fact, five e-batteries, that's all I can put in one container. And we got, we purchased a container just in case we got some because we have to, they're, these containers are actually filled with cell block. So if they were to catch on fire, that they're basically getting encapsulated in glass. But there was five batteries, $150 to get rid of five batteries. So it's a, it's a big dollar thing. We don't pay to get rid of batteries as long as we package them correctly. But again, call to recycle who we deal with, they will not take those 300 watt hour batteries for free. Let's see, so this is waste energy, so they do about 40, this is the Foston facility. And then again, I talked about the $85 and that's answers your question, Mr. Carlson. It goes down to Partner Coalition pays for tip fee. We save that $85 on, on recycling tip fees if we actually do that, so. Uncontaminated yard waste and dirt does not belong in garbage. And that kind of caveats back into this jumping worm. We can't, we can't put that even in landfills. They can't use it for, they can't use the dirt. I got to do a little bit more research because actually this just came out today. But I thought I had actually briefed the solid waste committee a while back on jumping worms because it was something that I thought was pretty interesting and they looked a lot like a night crawler. But that's why it's going to be hard for a lot of people to not know the difference between a night crawler and one of these jumping worms.
Do they catch fish?
I would guess so because they're supposed to be really, really active. I'd like to use one actually because they're supposed to be.
They, they literally jump on your hook.
You don't even have to jig it at all, it just moves.
Hey, Brian, back on the, the part, I think it actually honestly saves us more than just the $85 tipping fee because those recyclables generate revenue for, for our, our multi-county facility over there where they turn, you know, and actually sell all of those. And if it wasn't for them selling all that, we would have higher tip fees because of that as well. So it helps keep our tip fees down as well as, you know, not having to pay for that particular load of stuff, so.
Right. So the MRF takes, I would say is about 90 some, I would say 95 plus effective on taking out containers. You know, your metal and plastic containers. But again, if you mix it in garbage, our fiber doesn't get taken out. And one of the biggest revenue sources is cardboard. So when you don't put that in the recycling bin, that doesn't get recycled. Just gives you an overview of all of our, what we consider all of our sites. And we're spread somewhat geographically, if you put those 10-mile circles around there, we pretty much intersect except for where Craig lives. Bemidji Transfer Station, the one thing I would say is I believe our department does, and the guys that work there, I would, I've visited a lot of different waste facilities. And I think that this facility is by far the cleanest, the most well-organized facility in the state of Minnesota. And I'd, I'd challenge anyone to, that's listening to prove me wrong, so.
Hey, Brian, I do have to commend your, your staff because I know anytime I've been there, they're always willing to help. I mean, they're just, they don't stand around and just wait for you to, I mean, you have an outstanding staff, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And it looks a lot better than it used to when it was run by the fire people.
Yes, yes, I, we take a lot of credit and, you know, that was our whole, our whole objective is to not only save money, but to provide a better service. And I think we've done that, yeah. Black Duck Transfer Station, we did remodel that a few years ago, 2018. And that facility can handle everything that the Bemidji facility can, except for they can't take packer trucks. So you can't bring commercial trucks in there and get rid of your waste. You have to come down here to do that. This here is just to, to show the board that it's the, the waste hierarchy in the state of Minnesota, which that changes too. It seems like we're always trying to adjust that, but that's where you get the three Rs are on the top. And we're always, that's part of the thing, we're always trying to push, push the waste stream up as far as trying to figure out what to do with it. We have a couple reuse facilities, if you don't know about. The, we took the old, and actually I would say that there's a lot of historical value to the, to the old cabin that's at the Black Duck Transfer Station, turned that into our reused facility. We actually have a local resident and I don't, I should have remembered her name. But I was just up there this last week and seeing how well organized that was. And there's a local resident that comes and helps our solid waste operator up there. And she's got that thing looking really, really nice. And the community uses it quite often. One in Bemidji, we, we only open that up on Thursdays. And we open it up from 1:00 to 4:00. And we have quite a bit of participation there too. One of the things I would say, we gave, we give away a lot of bikes. It's amazing how many bikes come in, well, it was amazing how many of everything that comes in. But especially bikes, we've given a lot of bikes away to families. Over here, oh, got it, that's why I'm pointing the wrong way. So reuse, this just shows you that we did about 16 tons of waste last year is what we diverted from sending to, to get disposed of. We did about 8.26 tons of textiles and we partnered with DAV on that. And we do our own composting and what I, when we do tours at the landfill, I always like to bring them there and show them each one of those windrows is a year. So it takes about five years to turn compost into actually usable dirt. We do boat wrap and that's kind of going to be an incentive too. There's actually a bill that came out this year that actually the state's gonna, again, we don't know all the specifics, the, everything will be in the, devil in the details as far as what this really means for us. They're actually setting up for the EPR, they're going to set up a whole new division and, and figure out how to manage that, which we'll discuss that here in a minute, but at some point, this will get paid for. So I have about five minutes left. So our separated organics, you can see that we, we're kind of still in our infant stage on that. To further with that, we To further with that, we are going to try to increase uh our organics. We have some grants in. To do further our household organics collection and our commercial organics collection. Um. It really depends on if we get the grants from the state of Minnesota or not. Sharps, just a little thing on sharps. We don't accept sharps. You can put sharps into a dishwashing detergent bottle. Wrap it with duct tape and then label it sharps, but I highly recommend bringing it to the Sanford Center. They've uh they will take all the sharps from our residents.
Sanford Center?
Or not Sanford Center.
No.
Sanford Health, yes. So Product Exchange, we did five hundred and eighty-two gallons of paint last year that people came and took that they didn't have to purchase. So that's a huge benefit for residents, especially the price of paint these days. Um, so if you need to paint. Doesn't hurt to stop and see if we have what you're looking for. Shingle program, we've uh started this a couple of years ago. It's been going fairly decent. The county engineer uses the shingles. It's used as a uh um stabilizer and dust control. Next page, so or this here depicts. We had some really, when we were doing our final cover, that depicts some really substantial rainfalls like we're having this year. Where we had the shingles spread across there. It didn't, we didn't have any erosion at all, but everywhere around there, you can see that it uh eroded all the dirt. Man, I have a difficulty with that thing. Might need new batteries in here too. Um. Concrete diverted from landfill. We're actually just having concrete crushed again. So we we get all the dirty nastiest concrete that's left. In Beltrami County because all the other contractors likes lakes and stuff takes it for free. So we get all the stuff that has all the rebar in it. We we elect to still um. Remove it from the waste room because it still has some value. We take the metal when it gets done, we recycle that. And then we actually then can sell the um concrete, crush concrete, crush concrete. Right now it goes for twenty-seven dollars a a yard. So um. It's not, we will get some revenue out of that too. Immolition landfill, one of the things that we still need to do, the landfill, we uh still need to get a a quiet title action done. We've had some issues with that. Some land transfers haven't been, weren't necessarily recorded correctly in the past. So we're working on that. We've been working on it. Um, but I just wanted to let the board know that. The solid waste committee knows about it and we are working on it. Future demo landfills, uh, big thing. We're no longer going to have a um unlined landfill in the in Beltrami County. In fact, across the state of Minnesota. Um, they believe that the MPC believes that they're gonna still have rules pretty much ready to. To go to for next legislative session to get passed. What that means, we don't know. They're actually going to have public comment sessions. And these public comment sessions, they're actually going to have one in Bemidji. And I just found this out again a week ago. Um, they their rules, their new rules are actually um. In there um. They haven't, they're, it's in the process that they've already had them. They're already written. They're going through revisory and all this other things. So we're going to see what they propose. And then we'll have to see what we, how we uh object or or what the future of this really looks like. But we've been working on that as well. Um, something that we talk about every month in the solid waste committee on the direction of that. And we have to have a plan by, well, we need something easy to be done by two thousand twenty-nine. C and D rule update, uh, just some different things um that John Buck, he is the one that's going to do these new rules. And that's what, that's why that was significant in there. Um. Landfill, uh, so another thing to just mention is uh there's hiring a hundred and fifty more people to help us out. But I I I use that kind of sarcastically because usually a hundred more, a hundred and fifty more people above you. Just gives you more things to do, but uh. Yeah, well, I don't think they'll, I don't think they'll necessarily get to Beltrami County. In fact, uh, I don't want to go there, but they uh, yeah. So this is where I talked about the the two thousand twenty-nine uh deadline for us. Um. We actually have more capacity than that. Part of that was because we're taking out shingles and different things like that than we were in the past. We always were taking concrete out, but we also bought a. I don't, probably two thousand sixteen, we bought a new or maybe seventeen, we bought a new trash. Compactor for the landfill and that the. It was, we had a thirty-five thousand um pound one. Now we have an eighty thousand pound trash compactor. So we're getting a lot more compaction to our waste out there too. So which also helps with airspace. Waste haulers, we have a only four main waste haulers. And we, one of the things, we also do have dumpsters. In the city of Grigla and that is a, that's handled by Spruce Valley Enterprises. Funding a solid waste, uh, just talks about what the assessment is currently. What you get for your assessment. I always like to break it down, fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents a month. In my opinion, gets you a lot of service where uh all you have to do is go somewhere else. You don't get free e-waste. You don't get some of the benefits that you get here in Beltrami County, free tires. Um, tires cost a lot of money to get rid of. So one of the ways we try to mitigate um non-county um. Customers is these orange cards and we sent those out uh. I think two years ago now, we sent it out to every resident. We need to do that again. I think we're going to do it again this fall. Um, and we'll probably try to do that every year just because it's a, it seems to be something of contention. You know, I tried to, wanted to do it every other year. So we're not always just sending out more orange cards, but um. I think this helps Hubbard County, their waste, they have a much, I mean, their population's a lot less than ours. And uh they're, they actually get a lot more demo debris than we do. But they don't have, they they don't charge for it and they don't really monitor who brings it either. So there's. They want to do something like this, but they're looking at stickers on their cars or something like this. Um. I like these because you can take that, move it from a different car to whatever you're going to actually bring. So. This just talks about PFAS and chronic wasting disease. So we deal with that as well um over time. But uh those are things that affect our waste stream. In fact, the chronic wasting disease, we actually take deer. At the transfer station um during hunting. Um, and that goes over to the Polk County landfill. And they actually had a special variance to take deer when when we realized we had chronic wasting disease in Beltrami County. Talked about batteries. That's where, that's what our battery recycling containers look like. And this just gives an update on um all the different um bills that were passed. One of the more significant ones is this extended producer responsibility bill. That actually is gonna um. Again, devil in the details on how it actually gets done. It's going to be um phased in throughout several years here, but. At some point, we're going to possibly get paid. From the producer to make sure that we uh with all the recycling activities that we do. The, it may not come out of local government, but we'll be paying it upfront as consumers, just like we do paint right now. And this was one of the things we tried to uh get bonding for, which. You all know, none of the bonding, they're basically, the state decided not to do any bonding this year. So that's where uh, that's where that sits. Just talking some more about the projects that we have. These are projects that, so biochar, we're looking at, we still have a few grants in. Trying to take wood waste and turn it into what they call biochar, which is layman's term charcoal. And the charcoal then gets added as a soil amendment, which then captures nutrients. It has to get activated by um putting it into some type of uh um organic material like compost. You mix compost and um. Biochar together and you have a really great soil amendment that uh um could be used in agriculture. Just some more things about some of the things that were, this actually got um funded is the bag opener in Foston. So we're gonna be able to actually try, that'll actually take some of the recycling out of the waste stream as well. That would have went to the landfill. Um, and it's the really small stuff. So this will actually send it back through the system again. I'm gonna keep going. I'm gonna try to. So we're looking at just some real highlight things. We're looking at taking sheet rock and also using that. Can be used as a soil amendment as well. We have uh, we have a partner, a private partner that's willing to buy this stuff. So we have an outlet for the sheet rock and for the wood waste that we're trying to turn into biochar. So that's uh one of the uh um incentives. We actually went and toured this um facility. And it's kind of a new concept. Um. But we're trying to do, as we further look at what to do with our C and D, we're trying to figure out how we can reduce it. Instead of this putting it into a landfill. So that's all these are incentives to. Try to mitigate how much stuff we're going to haul away from Beltrami County and and actually just dispose of.
Up against.
Yep.
A public hearing.
Okay, got it. I will uh, I'll be done. Um, but yeah, we. At the, at the end of the day, um, we're constantly looking at things to do, how to make things better. And I I would say that if I was asked to be here today to give you an update of solid waste. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you much.
Yep.
Tim.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I was, I was hoping to to maybe learn about uh. How you work with Brent or or maybe like associations in regards to human waste and and who pays for that and and things like that. But maybe that be a different uh.
Yeah, maybe you have to come back.
Yeah. And uh. Because I know that's a big, big concern for a lot of folks in my area and.
Yep.
Hope to learn a little bit more.
Yeah, I've been part of those conversations. Um, the, I actually started the first human waste collection. And um up there. And Mr. Gosbig, that was one of the things I actually did some uh, some uh um data. Crunching and figure out how much waste could actually just be left on the ice there as far as human waste. And it was pretty astounding for for that. So, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. We'll have you come back. Um, is it, does anyone have any uh? Things that they want to bring up regarding the agenda, upcoming agenda? Anything looks good? Okay. With that, we'll adjourn for about two minutes to give us a tiny break.